Today is Monday, March 27th. Let's get the show on the road. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please? Council members Leaks May?
Here.
Martin, Pollica?
Here.
Mayor Protem Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Porter. Can we have a motion to excuse Mayor and Councilmember Martin?
Due to illness?
Due to illness?
I'll make that motion.
Support. All right, moving on. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Or do we need to do a roll call?
I can do roll call. Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Pollica?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Piana?
Yes. All right, moving on to presentations. We have three presentations tonight, and the first one up is presentation of our new probationary firefighter, Peter Michalik Sullivan. Come on up.
Mayor Protem and Council, I'd like to introduce our newest firefighter, Peter Michalak. Peter Michalak started on February 20th, completed his two-week orientation, and is currently riding third person on our ambulance right now, and we're very happy to have him.
Excellent. Well, welcome to Ferndale. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
All right. Second on the presentation is Election Task Force Wrap-Up, being presented by Madam Clerk, Marnie McGrath. Excellent.
Okay, the Election Task Force is a group of residents who answered my plea on the city website for an exciting opportunity to guide the voter's future in Ferndale. So in July of 2015, we started looking for people, and we had our first meeting in August 2015, to an amazing turnout with a dynamic group of people. We generated lots of ideas about where the new precincts would go, where the new polling locations would be, and for my lucky stars, after the election was over in 2015, they had offered to stay on through 2016, knowing I had a big election season coming up. So we had a great turnout. We had plenty of people coming out. I have a list, and if I forgot anyone, I apologize. So we have precinct inspectors, Donnie Johnson, Mary Rising, who is here this evening. Linda Gillis, Valerie Owen, Pamela Smith, and Joel Petrie. We also had vested citizens, Kat Bruner-James, Heather Coleman-Boss, Stephen Smith, Genja Lombardo, Gloria Sherman, Kevin Deegan-Crouse, and Bob Porter, who also could fit on that precinct inspector list. Several of them volunteered to work during the 2016 elections as a result of being on the task force. And then as far as city officials, we had councilmembers Pollica and Martin help us out, Kara Sokol, our community engagement director, and Deputy Clerk Barb Miller, and myself. And since Mary, I think, is the only one here, I'm going to give a special shout-out to her. She is our precinct chair, one of our precinct chairs over at the high school. She works with Councilmember Leaks May as co-chair. She's done so much, has been very active in our group. She volunteered during the voter registration drive, where I dressed up like a fool and hula-hooped like Uncle Sam, and we got some voters to sign up. And she's been working tirelessly to increase voter involvement. She's just really involved, and she's did a survey about whether voting matters and created a really nice report for us on how to increase turnout. So we appreciate all of our members' contributions, but Mary, thank you very much. You're a rock star. So our mission was to increase our polling locations. That's kind of how we got started. We needed to redraw our precinct boundaries so that we could increase our precincts to nine. So we had to add voting locations, and the biggest thing is improving the voter experience. So along with that, increasing turnout, reducing the wait times, of course, and improving our precinct inspector training processes. So I think we accomplished what we set out to do. This shows our average 2012 presidential election wait time was about two hours. In 2016, it was less than 45 minutes, didn't get a lot of complaints. In 2012, our big election story was the long waits at the precincts. In 2016, our big election story was Mason the Precinct Cat, who kept walking into the Kulick Center and wouldn't go home. So, you know, that, for me, is a win. This group was just great because we were able to have an honest discussion and get really valuable feedback from each other. By having precinct inspectors, citizens, and staff, we could look at it going, well, from my perspective, this is how we need to address this, and then from someone else's perspective. And between those three views, we were usually able to come up with a really good solution that worked for everybody. So I'm a much better election administrator because of these people. This experience has been one of the best in my life. I professionally couldn't ask for more. I was actually at the Michigan Association Municipal Clerks Conference last week, and they asked what our biggest professional accomplishment was, and this is what I came up with. I said, you know, this was a really great experience, and these people really did a wonderful job for us. Our top priority was always to improve the voter experience, and we were able to stay on topic for a year and a half, so that's pretty good. We had really dynamic, inclusive meetings. Everybody had something to bring to the table. We've learned a lot. We've implemented a lot. There's always improvements that can be made, but at this point, I believe that our work as a task force has come to its logical conclusion. I know that I can call on any of them for help again in the future, and I will always be grateful for this experience and working with these people. Barb and I and Mason the Precinct Cat say thank you.
Well, on behalf of council, I just wanted to express our gratitude. You know, when things don't go as well as we had planned originally in 2012, we asked you to take a look at how to improve it, and you don't write in. And really took a citizen's approach to finding solutions that would work for our residents, our voters, and so I really appreciate that. And I want to give a shout-out to her because Marnie was selected as City Clerk of the Year finalist, so she's in the running to become City of the Clerk of the Year, and I know it's from this task force and all the work that she's done. So thank you, Marnie, for all of the hard work you do on behalf of our voters and residents.
Thank you. It was a great experience.
Okay, and the third presentation tonight is the Downtown Development Authority Budget Presentation, and Executive Director Barry Hicks is here, as well as Treasurer of the DDA, Jackie Smith. Come on down.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and city council members this evening. One second, let me get our presentation up.
And while they set up, I just wanted to put this in the context of the rest of the city approving their budget. So City Manager McGrath, can you talk a little bit about the process here and where the DDA fits in?
Sure, absolutely. We have actually multiple meetings on our budget process. We met originally on Saturday, March 11th, all day for the general fund budget, and our meeting, again, council and staff on Monday, April 3rd, to finish our budget conversation. And typically, the DDA is part of that, but we don't make them sit through the long, arduous conversations we have and let you guys come into a separate presentation. So just a reminder that the DDA budget is part of the general, or is part of the budget in whole for the city and is part of the approval process. So this is just the presentation to the DDA. We will actually be having the whole budget presented formally. We have some charter regulations. Our budget in general, which includes the DDA, is formally presented to city council on April 10th, and then is formally voted on on April 24th. So this is one cog in the wheel of our budget bicycle, if you will.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hicks?
Thank you very much. Yeah, this year, I know in, last year, we focused a little bit more on some projects and things that happened around downtown. This year, I'm going to focus a little bit more on the forecast for the budget going forward for the next few years, what the trend looks like from the previous fiscal year, where we're currently at and where we're going. With that, so right now, this is some numbers on the first slide for the year, and fiscal year 15-16. That is the one that we were in, not the one we're currently in. This is the past fiscal year. And I just wanted to give you an idea as to where we're kind of starting for the current fiscal year. There was a little bit of an increase in revenue over what was originally approved and projected, as you'll see there, and that was mostly due to some revenue received through property charge-backs. I don't think that happens every year, but, or to that extent, but we did get a little bit of revenue from it this year. Some of our major expenditures from that year, we had hired a marketing firm to assist with getting our message out, as well as one of our ongoing reoccurring costs that are always a major expenditure, which is downtown maintenance. I will add that $134,000 that is listed there was probably a little on the low side for the year. However, that's what it came in at for the very end. And then moving forward, a couple of the reasons for the fund balance gain that you saw on the previous slide was there is a significant reduction in personnel costs due to the transition in the executive director position, as well as not having other full-time staff. I think you had one full-time staff all year, and then there was some part-time staff on and off. So it was not a fully-staffed DDA during a portion of that year. Then there was also a little bit of reduction in marketing that was internal, not the firm that you see mentioned above, and then a reduction in some office rent because we moved into city hall during the latter part of the fiscal year. The current fiscal year that we're in right now, you'll see, we're looking at some proposed amendments that are actually going to bring the total revenues down pretty significantly, as well as some of our expenditures. So the major reason this year for the revenues was because of the property taxes had decreased a little bit, but that's one of our major revenues. Our millage is at about $57,000, which is the additional millage that the DDA captures within our district, and then contributions and sponsorships were right around $25,000. Some of the major expenditures for this fiscal year, now that you're back being fully-staffed again, is your personnel cost, the maintenance contract, which is the downtown contract with a worry-free, and then some of our contractual services that included things like, you may remember going through that strategic planning session, for example. That would be where we pay those consultants from. And then I'm going to turn it over to Jackie for the slide.
Tag team at the best. Reduction in our revenues that we're looking at for the 16-17 fiscal year is continual decrease in the property taxes with the headly override going down. And then the other really big one is the loss in the library millage with the law that recently passed. We're going to be losing about $25,000 of our budget. The other thing we did to be really conservative and sustainable is the contributions and sponsorships for our events were put at a really high level. They were really hard to attain, and we would rather have our events and sponsorships balanced out at a level that we know is attainable and workable, rather than have a shortfall. So we're working on being very sound in our predictions there. Thanks. There's the button. In our trend forecast over the next several years, we are starting with the 15-16 fiscal year, which is over, the 16-17, which is coming to a close for us, and then going all the way through to 19-20, looking at where our budget is going to be, where we're predicting it. Now, one of the things this does not take into consideration is, within our goals and objectives that we set out for the 16-17, or this year, this calendar year, is the capital outlay, the major street projects, revising the DDA development plan. Those are going to be additional costs, but we weren't sure where they were going to be able to come from in our budget to be able to meet those needs because our focus is going to be on the Business Assistance Plan, which we are partnering with the city on. So we've accounted for, in this financial forecast, is that $50,000 a year for the 16-17 and the 17-18 fiscal years going towards that Business Assistance Plan that we're going to be partnering with the city on. So this is all in our projections and our forward-thinking. Moving on, so giving us this lovely little graph to show us where we're trending. Our revenues are trending down, and our expenditures are trending up. This is going to, just going to move forward one quick slide. Now you can see where our fund balance is just taking a nosedive over the next couple of years because of the reinvestment and the needs that the DDA has. We just want to be really clear with everyone that our fund balance will be decreasing pretty quickly because of the different reinvestments, so there's not a surprise coming in the future. Moving into the forecast from 2017 to 2020, some of the items not taken into consideration because we have to find out where in our budget they can come from, or where in our fund balance they're going to come from. We have some big decisions to make in the DDA with the board, and we're trying to be very financially sound and forward-thinking, as well as sustainable in our goals. So the trashcans and benches, replacing them or updating them is about $80,000. The Vester Street reconstruction that we had put on hold during the DDA transition, that's going to be about $800,000, so we're going to be looking for some grant revenue for that. The development plan update that we're looking for in our strategic plan is anywhere between $25,000 and $50,000. We haven't even started to cost out expanding a clean and safe program, and then, of course, writing and looking for grant revenue. So those things were not taken into consideration yet.
Also, looking at the expenditures that were taken into consideration, Jackie did mention there was a business assistance that we were considering, as well as downtown maintenance, which is ongoing. And in some of these other considerations, we mentioned the library millage, as some of you are aware, there was a legislation passed in Lansing that has kind of offered us an opportunity right now to work with the library on some of these things, but for the time being, what we know is that we're projecting conservatively and trying to show a decrease in funding over time. It's about, it's actually a little under $50,000 a year to our budget each year, but some of the things that haven't been taken into consideration with that would have also been what it looks like having the increase in the library millage had we kept our capture. Sorry if that doesn't make a lot of sense. I will answer questions later, I promise. Also, the increasing cost of maintenance, it seems to be trending at about 1.5% increasing annually, so I accounted for that, as well as a reduction in revenues due to the headly rollback, which will take place over the course of at least the next three years in the projection, I believe beyond. I'm not sure how far that goes out, but I think it's five years, Cheryl, is that what it is? Five, sorry, five years, yes, which is beyond what we're showing here. Also, some statistics for you. This is what we reported to Main Street Oakland County in terms of, every year, the National Main Street Program asks all the main streets to report on a couple of different statistics, which include public investment, private investment, information about jobs, as well as some of our volunteer hours, advertising, that sort of thing. So here you can see what a few of those numbers are, and these are all kind of taken based on an extrapolation method we use via either retention visit with businesses, or more likely, we call businesses throughout the year and kind of do a little check-in. Some of our accomplishments, I will turn it back over to Jackie for it.
One of the things we did is we updated our strategic planning method so we could build objectives that were attainable, and this strategy was effective, so we were able to reach the goals, many of the goals we set out. So we were able to develop messages that are shared with businesses and residents, update our databases using CRM, Customer Relationship Management software for business outreach, retention visit program, being able to reduce the cost, moving the DDA office, consolidating the services with the city, and making, the big thing is making our events self-sustaining through sponsorship program and really reaching for what we could attain, rather than reaching for something that was not sustainable because of the changing dynamics in volunteerism. With that being said, we also developed a training for staff and volunteers. And then we moved to our 2017 strategic planning. With our first three goals is that branding and communication, the business resource, and the downtown Ferndale experiences, and then the points underneath that that we're shooting for. Again, continuing to establish the value of the DDA brand, showing people that we have a value in the community and we actually do work for them. We work with the city to develop the construction communication strategy that's going to be coming up. That's a big part of our strategic plan. Probably, I don't know, 75% of our energy we look at is going to be going towards that. We're very cognizant of that and know that is so important to us that that's going to make or break us in the community's eyes. Business resource, again, this is the same thing, working with that construction communication strategy is helping business owners during the construction and providing feedback opportunities for the business owners. This is a big focus of ours, and know that we are here really as an advocate for the businesses and to help give them voice and stepping into that role even more so. And then the downtown Ferndale experience is working with our partners to keep downtown safe and clean and expand that program, and developing guidelines and codes to support our desired development.
The last two points that we hit on from our strategic planning session, and these are reminiscent of the previous year, were the develop volunteers and staff and being a data-driven organization. So we've been working with our partners to try to provide volunteer training opportunities, as well as looking for appropriate training programs for them. You know, there was a lot of discussion about, do we need 500 volunteers, or do we need 25 awesome volunteers? Well, you know, that depends on the event, and any volunteers in my book, the people that want to come out and help us, is awesome. So the next thing was the data-driven organization, which is where we wanted to continue to develop some customer relationship management software. We now have that fully up and operational. That's what we've been using to try to track some of the statistics and go on retention visits, as I mentioned. And as that database gets populated, it's become a very useful tool for us, kind of a quick reference for taking a pulse of what's happening downtown. So I'm glad that is up and running and working very well for us. The other opportunities that were discussed during our strategic planning session were to continue to develop the DDA and city relationship through joint projects. I think we've already mentioned a few of those in terms of some of the construction that's happening down here over the course of the next year. Develop the parking and construction strategy in partnership, and also measure different metrics, I heard during that meeting, things such as how much office or retail and restaurant space do we have, what are we keeping, what are we losing. So statistics tracking, I think, basically was the message. Also, looking at considering updating the 2012 downtown development plan, that is the last time our plan was updated, and that is the plan that kind of talks about what kind of development is happening around town, what direction we'd like to go with it, what are our priorities. We addressed a lot of capital improvement issues in that plan as well. And then the inventory of physical assets, such as trashcans and benches, I think were mentioned among many other things, and investigate different replacement costs. I did provide a number earlier in this, which is kind of a preliminary, but there would still be a lot of groundwork to do to go out and assess the number of those assets that we have and what their condition is. The number I provided was just my best estimate. And then business communication outreach, as Jackie mentioned, this is so vitally important. There is a meeting coming up, a joint meeting between the DDA and the city council, as you're well aware, in April, on April 17th, where we would like to talk about some of the things that are going on with the parking deck construction, as well as, I believe the city's communicating a residential communication strategy, and the DDA will be presenting a business communication and outreach strategy. These are just a couple of the bullet points that you'll be getting more info on at that time, but this is all stuff to provide business assistance, which is one of our biggest focuses in the upcoming year. Also, some other projects that we are working on are a few design-related projects, which I know we're already putting together a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to talk about development design standards that I think eventually will be coming to you before city council, restore some of our existing art pieces, and then, some of you may be familiar with the bus shelter that was redone last year over by the Rust Belt Market. We're looking at redoing a few more of those, as well as some other opportunities as they present themselves, which is maybe doing some of the bike racks and doing some repainting or different contests and things of that nature. And then through promotions, we're also looking at doing some alternative type of outreach that we haven't done as much of in the past. We have done in the past, but not in the recent past, which is getting back into a little bit of more video and radio for promotion during the time, during the course of the next year, and that is what I have for you.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any questions from council?
I do have a couple of questions. So we spent almost two years working on a master land use plan, and the DDA was very much a part of that discussion and project. Through that project, we identified a lot of action items and deliverables, and some of those were directly related to the downtown and the DDA. And I'd like to know where those items from the master plan are within your budget, because we, I believe that we should be working toward completing those items, and that's what should be reflected in the budget. So I'm just curious to know where you see some of those coming out?
Yeah, some of those that were brought up, we're trying to work a little bit on how some of that's going to fit in, to be quite honest. Like I mentioned, a really big focus for us right now is trying to do some mitigation throughout the construction, which is kind of taking the spotlight right now. It doesn't mean that we cannot come back and assess those maybe in a future year. However, at this time, there are some small things. We have tried to start chipping away at that are a little bit more of the low-hanging fruit, which would be some of like the art pieces and things to try to clean up a little bit and keep things looking good. Not everything is in there right now, and I pointed out what some of those things are throughout this presentation. So I, you know, would love to have more discussion about some opportunities we may have to partner and work on a few of those items.
Okay. Okay. Budget line item, facilities maintenance, I think in your presentation, you called it downtown, I was trying to find it again.
Maintenance is one of the things, it was just...
Downtown maintenance, yeah. You, you show it at 142 for this year, 144,000, 146 for 18, 19. What does that include?
Yeah, that's our contract with Worry Free. They, they do a lot of the things like lawn mowing and landscaping and garbage pickup.
Okay. I just, I just wasn't sure what that exactly was, so.
That's what it is.
That is strictly Worry Free?
Yeah, that's all that comes out of that line item.
It would be helpful, if I may, can I add on to that?
Sure.
It would be helpful in your presentation to the final one to council, to delineate the services under that line item. It's your biggest line item in your budget of 141, nope, sorry, wrong, 142? 144? Right year?
Yep.
144,000. And it would be helpful just to know what the services you provide. Worry Free is your service provider, and they provide a range of services. So it would be helpful to know what services the downtown is receiving that benefit the environment of a clean, safe environment for the downtown. Because, to me, this is your biggest value proposition of why you exist, and how you benefit the downtown, and I think you're underselling yourself of your accomplishments.
We can provide more information on that, you know.
Okay.
And then the, oh, are you?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Then the only other item was capital outlay for 18, 19. You have 505,000. You kind of touched on it in the presentation, but I'm still not sure what you're expecting to invest that in.
So, let me explain one of the differences between, and you're looking at the spreadsheet, correct?
Yes.
So the spreadsheet is something, I'm sorry, the audience doesn't see that right now, but what those line items are that we're looking at out in 2018 and 19, that's kind of a placeholder for some of those capital improvement projects, just to say, this is the additional cash that we would probably need if we were going to do things like the different capital.
The vest, you're talking about the Vester experience?
Trash cans and lights.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there was a connection.
Yes, yes. And that projection was not in the slide that went up on the screen, because I was trying to illustrate a very realistic proposition of the direction that the budget is heading for the DDA, but it is included as a placeholder, you'll see it in your budget that'll be submitted through finance once that's complete.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, I'm looking at, now, under your expenditures taken into consideration, the business assistance, where is that on the spreadsheet? Is that under miscellaneous, where is that?
Correct, that is under the miscellaneous line item. There's not a set aside special item for it.
Now, is that, so this taken into consideration over the next two years, business assistance, what kind of business assistance were you looking for, and that's not, is that, that's not a real guarantee?
So, I put the slide back up here real quick. One of the things, this is kind of some of the stuff that we're, we're looking at that would come out of that. A lot of the business assistance may also come in the form, and again, I think we're going to talk about this more on April 17th, but would probably come in the form of, you know, valet services and shuttle services and different things of that nature. So, but the DDA also has this business communication and outreach component that's a core piece for us, where we would like to hold additional events to highlight certain business sectors, do indoor sidewalk sales, you know, just, and, and a number of other things listed up there, just to name a few. So that, that's the type of things we would be spending that money on, as well as working with the, and partnering with the city on providing some of those other services to help people get around downtown during construction.
May I add on that too? There's something that, in this slide that I, I think needs to be added, is I don't see sort of weekly or daily communication, so one of the successes of the DDA with How the West Was Won for the reconstruction of West Nine Mile, that Ferndale DDA had been recognized for its success was communicating construction details as they unfolded that week or that day, that may have been disruptive to a business owner or residence, wherever that was. And I was wondering how that fits in, because that's a critical component of the DDA connecting what's happening with the construction team and the city, with the DDA communicating to the businesses. Because one thing I've learned is that the DDA communicating out what's happening is essential for the businesses to communicate with their customers, because that's their direct target audience is their customers, and if they can't tell them what's happening about how to get where they're going, or parking, or we're closed for a water main, whatever happens. Just how does that fit into your communication strategy?
We've been talking about that. We, we've been talking about those successes, and we're measuring, in, in our conversations and my conversations with Barry, is we've been measuring the plans for the communication, business communication against some of the things that were really successful with How the West Was Won.
Okay.
So yeah, it's absolutely in our plan, unfortunately, you're right, it's not in that slide, it was a really big part of that.
Yeah. And then, we've moved, sort of, the city's moved closer to priority-based budgeting, and I know I've brought it up and you can't do it for this budget season, but it would be really helpful if we would move the DDA towards more priority-based budgeting outline, so that miscellaneous can show that it's actually business support assistance as a program under the DDA. I don't know how best to do that, but as my recommendation for the next fiscal year budget process.
Yeah, I think we, I, I think we could just split it out in the software. I don't think that would be a problem to do something like that. And as, as for the communication, everything, I, I know I've mentioned a few times, I'm sorry if I sound like a broken record, but I know on April 17th, when we get together, we're talking about some more in-depth in that communication strategy. This was really just intended to be a quick for the budget, kind of, to get through the presentation with more detail to come. So there, we will talk more about that, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, it would just be helpful to see it a little bit more, what are you investing in this year? And it's really hard to see it by, we're going to invest in this much for these services of this downtown, and we're going to invest in some of your public, I don't know what it's called, public improvements, it's for 15,000. I don't know how that's different from facilities maintenance?
The prob, that one is actually the build grant, that's where that's been budgeted to, for facade improvements.
Okay.
That's all that is.
All right, well, having it for the next iteration, coming to council for approval, having some clarity on that would be helpful, that it's a part of your facade improvement program. And then, I had a question about, and I think we're still working it through the city, our crosswalks at Nine and Woodward are in desperate need of repair, and I was wondering, the DDA has fixed those in the past, and I don't see that in the budget here as part of the budget discussion, or a line item, what it would take to fix that? And so, is that an opportunity to have that discussion on April 17th? And some white paint crossings are disappearing too in the downtown, which are safety features for the downtown, for pedestrians, safe crossings and walkings.
Yeah, I know, I think that's something, there's been some communication with the DPW department.
Be happy to jump in here and provide some answers. The striping and what they call legend work on the pavement in the downtown is scheduled for spring, as soon as the temperatures.
Oh, excellent.
Yes.
So it comes out of the city budget, not the DDA budget?
That's correct.
Okay.
The road striping program. The, also, the crosswalks on Woodward, initially, we thought we might be able to do a, a short closing and be able to replace partial sidewalks. MDOT will not allow it, it's an MDOT road. In fact, they would like a portion of the downtown closed.
Of course they do.
Yes. And so, that wasn't acceptable, particularly with all the other construction that may be going on, and so, the plans are actually, have been developed, the bid specs have been developed, and we're just waiting for a time schedule to try to determine everything that's going on in the, in the next year to plug in a, an opportunity.
Okay. All right, well, I, I know you're staying on top of potholes, but cyclists are coming out soon, and we don't want people to get hurt, swallowed by a pothole. Any other questions from council at this time?
The only, I'd just like to kind of reiterate, because we made such an investment with the master land use plan, I would hope that many of those items could be identified in presentations, you know, just pull those line items out, you know, this is what we're going to accomplish this year, and perhaps some of that should have been part of the strategic plan for 2017, just a suggestion.
Where the connection points?
Where the connection points are, between the ma, master land use plan and the strategic plan for the DDA.
Right.
That's, that's, that's all I have.
And then, I'd like to sort of wrap up with a final note. I was going to do it and call the council, but it kind of seems ripe for just sort of saying, what the DDA is experiencing in their revenue reduction is something that's happening across the state of Michigan and all DDAs and all cities. Council, majority of council right here just came back from the Michigan Municipal League last week in Lansing, their Capitol Conference, where the whole discussion is on the disinvestment in communities through revenue sharing. So while our growth of our community is going, and we're seeing a little bit more prosperity and new things are being developed, the way that the state's structure of government is set up, they sort of cut your, your feet off and your hands off, and says, that's great you have growth, but you can't capitalize on that, and Mr. Hedley comes back and rolls back your, your millage rate. So, we are anticipating, for the city, a 1, a .94 millage rate rollback, I think? That's from the...
I haven't got any.
Okay.
Close to.
But we're close to, which is almost a million dollars in rollback, so we have to reduce our budget by $1 million this year, forced by the government. So this is what the system is, and so, cities are growing, but the state won't let you grow your budget, and it's happening in the DDAs too. So I just wanted to say, I think we're all in the same boat, I feel your pain, but it's time to innovate and think creatively and work with others and partner, and I see semblance of that plan in your presentation. So, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we are now moving on to call the audience. Please come up to the podium and state your, your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes, and we request that you talk about topics unrelated to items on the agenda. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Mary Rising, and I'm a Ferndale resident, and I'm here with my colleagues in the blue shirts, we're all together, and we want to reintroduce our time bank to the community. Now, for those of you that are wondering, what's a time bank? A time bank is simply a network of community members who help each other. When you spend an hour doing something for an individual or group, you earn one time dollar. You can then use that time dollar to buy an hour of your neighbor's time with help or engage in a group activity. So if you help your neighbor by mowing their lawn, you can use that time to get a babysitter or ride to the airport, or any other need that you might have. And the great thing about time banking is everyone's time is valued equally. Now, I know that Ferndale already has a strong community and we help each other out all the time, but by becoming a member of the time bank, you get to cash in on your good karma and strengthen our network of neighbors helping neighbors. In fact, you may be familiar with some of our former leaders, Michelle Foster, Sherry Wells, Joe Spain, and though they could not continue to lead this effort, they are still members or supporters of our group. Now, for numerous reasons, including supporting a wider range of exchanging and sharing, the Ferndale Time Bank merged with the Royal Oak Huntington Woods Time Bank at the turn of the new year. During this transition, we were also approached about expanding our network to include North Woodward of Detroit. This idea, along with the fact that we have members from many different cities such as Oak Park and Troy, led us to expand our network and eliminate our geographical boundaries. Instead, we choose to explore what potential members can get out of the time bank, no matter where they live. So with that being said, I would like to introduce to you the new and improved Our Exchange Time Bank of Southeast Michigan. Our website is ourexchangemi.org, and that's our with an H. You can also look us up on Facebook, or grab a brochure from any person wearing a blue shirt. And if you'd like to learn more, you can also attend our upcoming Wine and Cheese Meet and Greet on April 6th at the Huntington Wood Library, or you can help with our Community Garden, which is starting back up on April 2nd, and we will also be at Clean the F Up on May 20th. So we hope to see you all soon, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, welcome back, time bank. Or you can put them also in the back on the table back there, and people can pick them up on the back. Hi, welcome.
Welcome. I'm Jim Braidwood, I live on Inman Street. I've been a resident of Ferndale for over 50 years, and I'm here representing a slurry of people that are in opposition to the apartment complex that was recently approved in the old El Shaddai Baptist Church site. What's presented is, is a violation of local code. Ferndale has a facade code length of 150 feet. They waived that, the Planning Commission waived that requirement and allowed them to design a building 260 feet, 70% longer than what the code restriction is. And basically, the building will run from Horton Street sidewalk, the sidewalk on Horton Street, to the sidewalk on Inman Street. It'll be a few feet off the, probably five foot off the sidewalk, and then be a 55-foot building. The building's going to include 28 apartments, 22 of them being two-bedroom apartments, five of them being one-bedroom apartment and one studio apartment. It will have only 46 parking places, that includes two handicap and one per 10 residents for visitors. Our contention is that the parking lot is undersized for the number of apartments. A two-bedroom apartment's going to have two, two vehicles, not 1.5, as I alluded to in the code requirement. One visitor parking per 10 units is inadequate, we feel, and 46 parking spaces is, doesn't even acquire or doesn't even accommodate the number of two-bedroom apartments, let alone the additional apartments. And when that happens, the parking is going to go down into the residential neighborhood and take away our nice quiet street. The building is capable of housing 100 people. If you add up the, you know, four people to a two-bedroom apartment and two people to a one-bedroom apartment, it'll contain 100 people. That's a huge amount of people in a, in a one-spot area. The building does not fit in, 260 foot long, it's going to be, the photometric plan has it, shows it being lit up by 10 wall pack LEDs, so it's going to look like a alien spaceship sitting there, among all the individual small thousand-square-foot houses that border the service drive in that area. There's a big concern about the parking issue. There's a big concern about, you know, the effect that it's going to have on, on crime and, and noise and over-parking issues. It's a common belief that it will not increase property values in the area. Another concern is in the subsidized housing. Nobody can identify whether it's subsidized housing, and, you know, it fits in, their projected income is 900 to 1,300 dollars a unit, which falls right into the HUD requirements for subsidized housing. Ferndale currently has over 800 available units in subsidized housing throughout the city. They have six apartment complexes. I don't think it benefits Ferndale to have any additional subsidized housing. It's more than any other community in the area. Royal Oak only has two, Madison Heights has...
Mr. Bradlin, we're at four minutes, so if I ask you to wrap up, please, that would be great.
All right. Our big concern was there was no notification like the Taft and the Wilson projects, the housing projects that involved the community and brought the community together. We only accidentally found out about this, and, you know, the article in the Woodward Talk also indicated that people from the management department, or one of the city departments, were out talking to residents, and I've talked to 30... And I've talked to 30 to 40 different residents, and nobody's talked to anybody about anything. So this was totally a surprise, and we hope, I mean, the building is strictly an investment. If you take the rent subsidies that are projected off of that, and a total construction project of $1 to $1.5 million to construct that site, you get a two- to a three-year payback on it, and that's an investor's dream.
All right. Well, thank you. We're at five minutes. I appreciate you coming up and hitting on all your points tonight.
Just to clarify, there will be a public hearing on April 10th regarding this particular-
Right. And it's a city council public hearing? Yeah, right, of course, yes. Thank you for coming in. Is there anybody else who would like to come up, who call of audience?
You said April 10th?
April 10th, yep. Seven, seven o'clock. Yep. Anybody else who would like to come up to call the audience?
All right.
All right, let's move on to the public hearing. We have three items on the public hearing tonight, and I'm going to open the public hearing, and then, public hearing is open, and then I'm going to ask our counselor, Dan Christ, to introduce these items.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. The first public hearing is with respect to the consideration by council of objections to renewal to the Class C liquor licenses that council annually has an opportunity to consider. Liquor licenses run from May 1st through April 30th each year, and council has adopted a resolution with respect to the criteria which it applies and expects that all license holders adhere to. So there are three particular establishments this evening which have been provided notice that council is going to consider a resolution objecting to the renewal of those liquor licenses. Those include the Blue Nile establishment. They also include the French Gourmet, and finally, the Posh license establishment. If anybody wishes to address council with respect to that matter, now would be the opportunity to do that. After the public hearing with respect to that issue, Mayor Protam, I would then ask questions of the city manager as it relates to the deficiencies with respect to the criteria that council's adopted before council would consider any motion on that matter.
All right, just one moment. Hi, folks in the back. Can we ask you to step outside to continue your conversation? Thank you for coming tonight. All right, continue, please.
Certainly. So now would be the appropriate time if anybody from the audience wished to address council with respect to the subject matter of the consideration by council on objections to liquor license establishments. I will then, after the close of the public hearing, ask the city manager as it relates to certain deficiencies of those three establishments. Again, Blue Nile, Posh, and the third being French Gourmet.
All right. We have representation from one of the businesses?
Yes, your honor, Ms. Mayor Protam, right?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, thank you. And members of the council, my name is Howard Collins. I appear before you tonight as personal representatives of the estate from Marvin Bernstein and Lena Bernstein regarding the French Gourmet. As you may or may not know, both of them, who are proprietors of that establishment, died within the last six months. And it's been, as you might imagine, devastating on their business. The notice that Mr. Chris sent out to us has been received, and we're cognizant of the issue now. Administration is underway of both estates, but unfortunately, there's no liquidity in the estates to satisfy the obligations that the city is requesting. We are in process, but that doesn't match your timeline, unfortunately. You know, and obviously, the obligations of the estate will be addressed in due course. You know, it would be my request on behalf of both of their estates that you take a neutral position to the request for the renewal. The license has been placed in escrow, since the business is not functioning as a restaurant currently. And so any objection that might be appropriate, if warranted, at the time that the license would come out of escrow could be, would certainly be, you know, dealt with at that point.
Anybody else?
Are there any other folks in the audience who'd like to address the other businesses?
I will comment, though, that the DDA had contacted the Blue Nile. As you know, they're always out of the country right about this time, and they did say that somebody will be coming in and addressing that tomorrow.
Okay. And so, Dan-
Mayor Protam, now would be the appropriate time if there's nobody else from council to shut the public hearing.
Okay, I will close the public hearing.
And with that, Your Honor, I would just ask a few questions of the city manager, just to confirm for purposes of the record, the circumstance prior to council considering any type of resolution. And Ms. Lynch, you, as the city manager, are familiar with the current delinquencies that exist with respect to the French Gourmet?
Yes, ma'am.
And have you had an opportunity to familiarize yourself with the amount of the debt with respect to the delinquency that the French Gourmet owes to the city of Ferndale?
Yes, I have.
And what is that amount? Okay. And council, for the record, I have provided notice, as Mr. Collins has indicated, to, to the French Gourmet about that this issue was going to be considered by council. Ms. Lynch, with respect to the Blue Nile, are you familiar with the amounts of the delinquency-
Yes.
-with respect to that establishment?
I am.
And what is the amount that the Blue Nile owes to the city of Ferndale?
$709.25.
Again, council, notice has been provided to the Blue Nile. Ms. Lynch, finally, with respect to the Posh Entertainment, Inc., which care of Hazelhurst Associates, are you familiar with the amount of delinquency there?
Yes, $28,047.64.
And council, I have, for the record, provided written notice to the license holder with respect to that delinquency that there would be a public hearing on the consideration of the objection to the renewal to that establishment as well. Now, unless there's questions by council with respect to this matter, now would be an appropriate time for a motion. The motion that is before you this evening would be to object to the renewal of those three license establishments. I would note that in the past, council, where it has entertained a motion to object to the renewal, where there has been subsequent correction, council has, in those circumstances, considered a subsequent resolution that would rescind the objection. So to the extent that there's any type of negotiated resolution with respect, as Mr. Collins indicated, as it relates to the French Gourmet, or alternatively, should the Blue Nile come in subsequent to today's date and correct its deficiency, council could, at its next meeting, either on the 10th or the 24th of April, consider a resolution rescinding those objections.
Okay, so what we need is a motion, but we can amend the existing motion, right, to include a rescind of the resolution? Or do they have to be two separate?
No, you wouldn't do, you would consider that at a later date.
Okay, okay, so not tonight.
If they're addressed, that's correct.
Okay. So I am not allowed to make motions? So it has to be one of you, or you?
I just wanna make sure that I understand.
Well, yeah, and I have a, I have a question. So Mr. Collins requested that, well, first of all, he stated that the license is currently in escrow, which means at this point, it can't be used at the establishment. Is that correct?
Well, that's, it's, it's, it's in escrow with the Liquor Control Commission, but it's the only opportunity for council to object to the renewal, and if it doesn't do that, it could come out of escrow without consultation from the city, so.
This, this is a guarantee that we get paid before the license is allowed out of escrow?
Right, and has an opportunity to weigh in with the Liquor Control Commission on that issue.
Yes, okay. Okay. So I would like to make the motion to adopt the resolutions-
Hold wait, just, just a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I just wanna make sure that I have this correct. You said that, Attorney Chris, that we could not, it would be understood that because we know that some arrangements or the French Gourmet's in escrow and Blue Nile's coming in tomorrow to discuss things.
It can't, the motion that goes to the Liquor Control Commission cannot be, there cannot be a contingency-
Okay.
...on that motion.
Right.
And that's why it would be appropriate for council to consider, A, the resolution as presented this evening, and to the extent that those other issues are corrected with any of the three establishments-
Okay.
-subsequent to tonight's meeting, council would have the opportunity, before anything happens with the license, because again, it runs through April-
Right.
...to May 1st, would have the, the meetings that are scheduled in April to consider whether it wished to pass a resolution rescinding that, rescinding the objection if, if the issues are corrected.
So at least 30 days or so?
From now, yes.
Correct?
Yeah, they have some time.
Yeah, the objection has to occur by the council 30 days prior to the expiration of the license.
Gotcha, okay. All right.
Did that end?
Okay. I move to adopt the resolutions objecting to the renewal of the liquor licenses to establishments that have not yet fulfilled their obligations as of Monday, March 27, 2015, at 5:30 PM.
Does, do they need to be listed? Nope. Support.
No, it's just what was listed in the-
Okay.
May we have roll call? Okay.
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Protam Piana?
Yes. And thank you, Mr. Collins, for coming in and explaining the situation, and we'll expect to make a, rescind the resolution in, in April. All right. Moving on to the second, I'm gonna close, I've already closed that out. Moving on to item B, our second public hearing is the Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application for Park Improvements at Geary Park. And our new Parks and Recreation Director is coming on up to talk us through what this is all about.
Good evening, council. The Parks and Recreation Department is in the process of applying for a DNR trust fund grant in the amount of $168,000 for Geary Park, and a portion of that, 50%, is matching fund for $84,000, and the deadline is April 1st.
And through the chair, that also is scheduled for a public hearing, Mayor Protam. This is, so we do have to open it?
Yes. Sorry. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and if there's any continuing presentation, continue on. If not, there's also opportunity for the audience to ask questions.
Okay, and we're also applying for, this under the same grant, for $82,000 for Wanda Park for park improvements. So that totals at $250,000. The match would be $41,000 for that park.
Since there are no comments from the public and no additional presentation, I'm gonna close the hearing and ask questions from council. Are there questions from council?
And just while you're looking for that, just to clarify, in order for us to apply for these grants, there has to be public body approval to know that we would expend those funds if we were to do that. So I think we're still working through what that would exactly look like, but we won't have another meeting in time, I don't think, to, to make that request.
I'm assuming that, yeah, that would be a conversation that we would have with the Parks and Recreation Commission about what improvements we wanted to make based on the Parks and Rec Master Plan that we just passed.
We will consult with them, but they're very specific. For instance, I think this year, we're doing again the paths-
Paths and the equipment.
Stuff that we have, the improvements that we know are more than likely to be funded. So I know that they'll be having that conversation at the next Parks meeting.
Well, and those are the most expensive, so-
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We tend to like to match those. My question is, I'm a little confused, 'cause there's a B and a C, and both of them are for Geary and for Wanda. So are there four resolutions, motions that have to be made?
There are two items on the agenda, one for Geary Park and one for Wanda, and what you see in your packet is a resolution, I think-
Oh.
-that wraps both of them together. Right?
No? Well, yeah, no.
I only see it, the two on the-
No, I'm, I'm looking at attachments, so.
So.
I received one council agenda item for both items.
No, I got it. I see my error.
That's for council action.
On the second page of the packet is the motion to approve-
So they're just the same on both of them?
Yes.
Okay, that's where, 'cause I was thinking, why do we need to make four motions?
Two separate, two, two separate applications.
Okay. I can't just make one motion, then?
No. May I have a motion for Geary Park?
Do you need to close the public hearing? She did.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move to adopt the resolution supporting a Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application for Park Improvements at Geary Park.
Support.
Yeah, it's just the two of them.
Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Protam Piana?
Yes. All right, moving on to the second, or the third, public hearing.
Another motion.
You need the motion on the second.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
I'll move this one. I move that we adopt the resolution supporting a Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application for Park Improvements at Wanda Park.
Support.
May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Protam Piana?
Yes. Okay, so I think this is why you are confused.
Yes.
Right? 'Cause the item C is Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application for Park Improvements at Wanda Park. Right? And it's the same resolution that we just passed.
Yes.
So we did everything and-
Wait, through the chair, as I understood it, you opened the public hearing for both, for both of those matters?
Yes, I know, I just, I did, I did. But I just wanna make sure I did that process right, so. Sorry for the confusion, everybody.
So, so that public hearing was as it relates to both park applications?
Right.
Both opened and closed at 8:04.
Yes, so the items in each grant application are very similar for the same types of amenities in each park, for, for crosswalks and improvements to play equipment. So I think these will be good. I think this is the second time that we're applying, right? We've got denied last year, this is our third time applying, so third time's a charm, and hopefully-
We were, we were awarded Martin Road and-
Oh, okay, yes.
-Harden last year.
Okay.
So the first year, we were denied the very first year.
We were denied one, okay, all right.
And we learned all of our lessons, and Jill was gracious enough to stay around for the next month to help us maximize our information.
All right, well, excellent. I'm excited to see us get this again, so, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on to consent agenda. Consent agenda is approved by one motion at the end, and I'm going to read the items. Consent agenda, item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 13, 2007. Item B, approval of the resolution proclaimed April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, as submitted by Councilmember Martin. Item C, approval of the extension of the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission through December 31, 2007, as submitted by City Manager. Item D, approval of the purchase of replacement workstations for the fire department in the amount of $5,128.98 from account number, as, account number listed, as submitted by Assistant City Manager. Item E, approval of the city of Ferndale to enter in an agreement to provide dispatch services for the city of Pleasant Ridge for an annual fee of $39,000, starting July 1, 2017, as submitted by Chief of Police. Item F, approval of the software and website services agreement with Seamless Docks for a cost of $10,000 per year for a three-year term from appropriate account number, as submitted by Assistant City Manager. Item G, approval of the Rush Mechanical, Inc., quote, "to install a mini-split AC cooling unit in the server room at a cost of $8,867, and that the expense be charged to general fund facilities maintenance," to the- fund facilities maintenance to the direct account," as submitted by Assistant City Manager. Item H, Approval of the Order and Dismissal of the Litigation Disclaiming Interest to the subject property, as submitted by City Attorney. Item I, Approval to Adopt Ordinance Amendment to Chapter 16, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article 1, in general, to amend Section 1612 of the Ferndale Code, as submitted by City Attorney. Item J, Approval of the Purchase of the Fernew INX stretcher and two excess surface extenders for a total of $40,789.44, as submitted by Fire Chief. Item K, Approval of the Bills and Payrolls, as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to review of the Council Finance Committee. May I have roll call, Madam Clerk?
I make a motion to...
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All right, let's have that roll call.
All right. Councilmembers Polika?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Portempiana?
Yes. Regular agenda item, moving on, we are now on Item A, Consideration of Resolution Affirming Ferndale as a Welcoming City. And this was submitted by Councilman Dan Martin, but he is unable to join us tonight, so I was wondering, City Manager Lynch, can you please do that on his behalf?
I can. So as you know, I believe two council meetings ago, we approved internal policies that really encouraged and made sure that we were being welcoming to all of those that visit, live, do business here in the city of Ferndale. And those policies really focused on making sure that expanding our discriminate, non-discrimination to immigration status. That was important to City Council because they wanted to ensure that there was an action item attached to the idea of becoming a welcoming community. In the meantime, during that process, we learned a lot more about an organization called Welcoming America, and they are very helpful in providing resources and help and assistance to our community to ensure that our staff is engaged and that we have opportunities to make sure that we are welcoming. And so we are encouraging City Council to not only pass a resolution to join the welcoming cities, but there is a resolution again affirming that we are indeed a welcoming city. As you know, throughout the time, over the last few months, we've seen a lot of communities who have passed such resolutions, and again, council wanted to ensure there was action item attached to that, so we did ours a little bit in reverse, but this is just truly just affirming once again that we are a welcoming community and that we want to ensure that we have the right tools in place to make that happen.
Excellent. Are there any questions or comments from counsel on this request of action? I'm really happy that Councilman Dan Martin introduced this resolution. We're seeing many cities across Metro Detroit pass these, and Welcoming America was really sort of came out of former President Obama's workforce on how do we, how do cities help integrate immigrants into the community, particularly immigrants who come to our country with significant skill sets and who are interested in finding jobs and skilled trades where they come trained already with that type of formal background. And so I really love welcoming cities and really think it fits the values of our community, and we also have a really strong chapter of welcoming cities called Global Detroit in the city of Detroit. And I think if we ever needed support or wanted to work across borders on immigration issues, we have a great partner to leverage. I see that this is a nominal membership fee of 200. I don't even know how that covers any membership costs coming from a membership organization background, but I'm just really pleased that we're moving forward with affirming our community as a place for all people. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say that in, or share that in the... Yesterday, I watched a frontline program called Exodus. It's a two-hour episode, came out in December, and it portrayed, or it followed five families coming out of Syria and the struggles that they had to get out of the whole war-torn area. And the bottom line is that these are just people like you and I who are trying to find a place away from violence to have a job and raise their families. That's what life is all about. So I'm so proud that we are doing this. Ferndale has always been a welcoming city, I feel, and this just helps reaffirm that.
I also wanted to say that this welcoming city resolution really aligns well with a report released by the state of Michigan, the Michigan Office of New Americans. And the report was released in April of last year, the contributions of new Americans in Michigan, which is the governor had created through another department. So seeing immigration as a economic growth for our state and making welcoming environments across all our cities is important to the economic well-being of us all in the state of Michigan, and the state is actually reflecting that. So to that end, may we have a motion?
Actually, let me just step, just want to actually thank City Manager Lynch for actually taking it a step further and finding an organization that will help us further align with what we're trying to do here and provide us with the resources that we need to do that. So thank you to you and your staff for taking it a step further.
Not a problem. Thank you. Okay. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution that reaffirms Ferndale as a welcoming city.
Support.
May we have roll call please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
And Mayor Portempiana?
Yes. Moving on to our final agenda item under the regular agenda is the consideration of the fiscal year 2017-2021 Capital Improvement Plan adoption. And up next is Assistant City Manager Joe to give a presentation.
This is the most exciting thing everyone in this audience is going to receive this week.
I was pretty impressed, I was pretty impressed though by the technology in this.
Sit back.
I'm on COP, so this is exciting for me.
Yes.
So we presented the annual update of the CIP at the Planning Commission on March 15th, and while them there, so we're back to do it again in front of City Council officially. This is the first time we've used this new technology. It's with partnership with Oakland County. We're using ArcGIS online to present the Capital Improvement Plan with the primary goal of making it more engaging and more transparent for the public. So I'm going to walk you through a little bit of that. The first wow factor, it's a video and it's moving. You can't see, but it's a video, the landing page. So that is a drone overview of the city of Ferndale. And welcome to the Capital Improvement Plan, enjoy the ride.
Oh, boy.
Ride's broken down. So the first slide, this is germane to the DDA presentation. I want to start with the budget process and just walk the public through. Again, bear in mind that every slide is intended to be informative for the public and to allow the public to engage with capital improvement planning and to understand it better as well as the budget. So again, we start with the loop, July 1, the fiscal year begins. Good thing we didn't get that far. July 1, the fiscal year begins, and then in the fall, we adopt, we begin the Capital Improvement Plan process. And the Capital Improvement Plan is a planning tool that we use to budget out five years of major infrastructure and other capital projects. This helps us incorporate these big-ticket items into the budget plan every year as well as making sure that we are aligning our major capital investments to major city plans, which is a nice segue into the next slide. 2017 was a big planning year for the city council. In 2017, we adopted the Master Land Use Plan. We referenced that tonight. That was a huge vision document for how land use is managed throughout the city, and it provides a vision for how we will develop and grow as a community. In addition, a Parks and Recreation Plan was passed, which lays out many major investments for every park within the city, as well as a city council strategic plan that was passed this year. And we will be going through each of those one by one. You'll notice in the right margin, this is an interactive component, the Master Land Use Plan is just here and available for you to scroll through and read within the Capital Improvement Plan. And you'll notice, once you read through the text here, we kind of described the master plan, but each one of these plans that was adopted contains primary category goals. So first here, if you click on land use, you'll notice that the screen changes. Now you can see the highlights of the land use objectives that the community and city council adopted as part of the Master Land Use Plan. And you could go through and you can see housing and neighborhood initiatives. These are the big vision statements and investments that we want to make for housing and neighborhood, economic vitality and so on. We also have recreation and open space objectives, transportation and mobility, and major city services and facilities. And I would encourage the public to open this up and engage with these because these are really the big vision statements for investments for our community over the next several years. Moving down, we have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. You'll notice that that was just adopted in February 2017. And just like the Master Land Use Plan, if you click each one of these goal areas, you'll get to see what the major investments objectives are for each of the parks, and this will help you understand when certain parks are going to receive those investments and what those investments are in terms of playground equipment and other things. You have facilities as a big objective, reinvestment in facilities, funding, how can we get more funding to support and grow our parks and to fund a lot of these capital initiatives? These are pretty lofty goals, so how do we get there? Maintenance and operations is an example. Partnerships and programming. Some of the work has already been done. This was a, this was a two-year process, I believe, that was spearheaded by the Parks and Recreation Committee, a committee that I believe Councilman Polika chairs. That two years was gone throughout the process, and during that time, some of those initiatives were completed throughout the planning process. So for example, the Garbit Park Playground Restoration, if you click this right here, you can see a little video, and you can see that in 2015...
This project has been a long time coming.
Familiar voice, familiar person.
And is the result of hard work and great efforts by...
I got to at least wait until his face comes up.
This is an example of what...
Counselman Polika actually led the opening of the first park and major reinvestment. This was a playground that was installed at the Garbit Park facility. And you'll see a second video if you want to click. You can see a celebration of the Ferndale's Dog Park ribbon cutting. Now, this was opened, I think, the following spring or fall.
It's wonderful to see so many of you today.
Rather, and you'll see the same voice, the same familiar face here. Doing another ribbon cutting.
I love those ribbons.
And incredible support of the mayor and my fellow council members on this topic.
But again, this shows you how important it is to understand what the Capital Improvement Plan is and what all of these plans are that we're working on, because they mean something, and this is actually us doing it.
Baseball isn't the popular sport.
Moving forward, not to cut the mayor off, he's not here, so. Then you have the third plan, the City Council Strategic Plan. This was a major document that's going to be addressed throughout this budget process. So as you tune in in April, you're going to see the more remarks for the City Council Strategic Plan. And why that's so important is that this city council is adopting the city's first vision statement and mission statement. They've identified guiding principles and the core values that embody this community, embody this staff that represent you and do work for you as a community. So those are very big value statements that this city council has made, and those statements and those vision, that mission and vision should be guiding our operational objectives as well as our investment objectives as a city. So walking you through those, if you click on the economic prosperity, again, you'll see the theme, you have key category investments here. Here you have up here the category economic prosperity, and below that, some initiatives we want to achieve. These are the actions that city councils prioritize staff to invest in, their time in doing. And as we achieve them, we'll knock them off the list, and we update this with city council every fall, right after the Capital Improvement Plan. So why do we do this? We set the stage with our planning because we wanted to make sure that all of our major investments are aligned with these things, because we have to prove out that we are achieving these big vision statements and value propositions with these big dollar ticket items. So here's an example... Oh, I have one more plan, I apologize. The Ferndale Moves. We are a city of plans. We have a multimodal network plan, and this is kind of where this, for me, gets a little bit more fun and engaging, and I'm sure you're all about to get excited, but if you touch anything on this map, you can get a picture of where the infrastructure location is. You can understand a little bit what has been recommended in terms of improving this infrastructure, and you can learn a little bit here about what goals that it touches. If you go to cross-sections, you can filter out all of the different planning projects, and again, click out any area in the city, and then you can understand what's being proposed for that section, when it's being proposed, and there should be a budget dollar value there as well. So this again is just another example of us trying to make this more engaging for the Ferndale Moves successes, this is just a quick low-hanging fruit. Last year, we did achieve one of the goals, which is finding alternative ways to connect the communities around Ferndale that don't involve a vehicle or forcing you to bike across Woodward in 109696. So again, if you click here, you can see who owns a segment, and you can click more referential material here. So this helps you kind of understand what's involved. So to restate, one of our primary goals for the CIP was to, first, the internal stuff that you're less interested in, we wanted to digitize the process. So we wanted to get rid of all the paper, simplify it, and make it really easy for staff to submit capital improvement applications every fall. They only get six weeks to do it, so we want to make it simple for them to do. Second, we wanted to establish an annual process, and we have started, established the fall as the process, so we will begin to open up the capital improvement application season in September. October, we will review with the city, with the CIP committee. On that committee, you do have Mayor Portempiana and Councilperson Polika do sit on, as well as two members of the Planning Commission as well, as several staff members. And then transparency. So in addition to all this fun, if you click the transparency right here, you're taken to the city of Ferndale's first open data portal. This is something we've been working on this year, and a lot of the forms that are submitted online and that should be available for the public are housed right here. And we just have a quick demo folder because this isn't complete yet, but it is for the CIP. So when you're engaging in this and you just click the CIP, you have three simple ways to interact with it. Here you can just get a, if you click that, you'll just get a brief explanation of what a capital improvement plan application is and what's involved. Here, this is going to be, and I'll touch on this at the end of the presentation, kind of the second iteration, is we want to open up an application to the public and allow the public to just easily submit digital applications to us. So if you have a capital idea for your neighborhood or for your park, and you want to submit it, you can. We're going to make you do some work because part of the application is aligning that with the community goals and the community vision. So we're going to make you study up the Master Land Use Plan, City Council's strategic objectives, so you can begin to align the community, your voice, with the planning voice as well. And then here, this is an open records portal, so every single application that's been submitted by any department is available right here. Once this loads up, this will break down by year. It's not showing up right now, but starting from 2017, you can see there's 20 applications. If you click here, you go to 2018, and you'll see only 2018 CIP applications, and you can have 43. If you click the filter here, you can search by whatever department you're interested in, keyword, funding account, whatever you want. But if you click a project, you can see when it's due, if it's assigned, who signed the application. You can see when it was submitted, and how much it was submitted for, where is it budgeted, when's it going to be budgeted for, what year. So it's just a different way to show the presentation, but again, this is all about education and all about... And again, this is all about education and all about making information available to the public so they understand the source of all these capital investments and where the alignment is. So we're just going to do a couple of highlights of this year's capital improvement plan. We're going to focus on the next three years because council adopts a three-year budget. So we're just going to narrow the focus from the five-year capital improvement plan to the next three years, touching on the major highlights. And again, we want to stay consistent with the theme of plan alignment. So first here, you'll see the Recreation Plan, we're going to call out, the Martin Road Park Reinvestment. How are those tied together to the CIP? Well, we have budgeted $500,000 for park improvements to align with the Martin Road Park Master Plan. And that begins in 2019. That is a typo on my fault, but when you click something, you should see the budget year, you should see just a brief snapshot about the cost, and you should see where it aligns in terms of planning perspective. So you have the Martin Road Master Plan here. You also have Healthy Connected Invested Neighborhoods, and that's CCSP, that's City Council Strategic Planning. So making sure that parks and healthy connected neighborhoods are, are speaking to each other are very important. Here you look at the MLUP. The Master Land Use Plan has called for us to be aware of investment needs for the DPW complex. This is the Department of Public Works' current campus and yard. It's a very old building. It's like a labyrinth, there's probably a minotaur in there, I think. Horrible reference, sorry. I thought it was awesome. That's $3 million currently. We don't have budget funding for it, but we included it in the capital plan because the CIP has a planning document and we want to revisit it every year and remember that that's a priority to us. That's an estimated $3 million. And you can see that that achieves the goal of City Services, Facilities and Infrastructure as part of the 2017 Master Land Use Plan. The City Council Strategic Plan, this is just an example here, we've included a project to bring in gigabit fiber into the City Hall. Why that's important? Because that is the first step that puts us in a position to provide public Wi-Fi spaces downtown. That is the goal for council, is to provide public Wi-Fi throughout the city. But we can't do that unless we have a strong backbone in which to amplify that signal. So making this first core investment, and this is a one-time cost of $125,000, that's estimated, to bring the fiber into the city, terminate it in City Hall, we could then position ourselves to expand and to achieve that vision. And again, that references the critical success factor of healthy connected neighborhoods. It's also a good investment for the businesses downtown. Here we have an example of this Safe Sidewalks Program. So any of you homeowners out there who have had sidewalk work done on your, on your block before, this is a different way to present the information now. In the past, we've just put it online in the PDF and you, you search a really long PDF, some streets. Now it's an actual interactive map. So if you click 2018, and you live within this yellow district, your sidewalk is scheduled for replacement next year, in 2019 and 2020 and so on. We'll be updating that every year. So Non-General Fund, this is going to be reflecting mostly the street infrastructure work that's going on. In 2015, the public passed a major infrastructure bond to reinvest in local roads. And so if you go down through this little explanation, and you look at 2018, you can see that over the next three years, we have budgeted about $18 million of that bond to be spent. Now, if you want to know which road is going to be impacted in 2018, you just click 2018, and you can expect that this roadwork will be done. And 2019, and so on to 2020. I will put a caveat in here, because I know our DPW wants me to, that these are plans, and the plans can change, especially with all of the utility work going on. I'm sure the public has experienced some sudden utility work done by consumers and DTE over the last year or so. A lot of that work is not coordinated with us and not shared with us until just before they start. So unfortunately, we do try to adapt and remain as flexible to make sure that we're being as efficient as possible, but that is a challenge that we face. For the Water and Sewer Infrastructure in 2018, if you're looking for water main information, we're going to be replacing these street segments, and we're going to be updating that. Scroll over to 2019, and it zooms you up to the northern side of the part of the city. And it's the same kind of story for water infrastructure improvement. So the DPW is kind of limited to the two-year snapshot. We have a broader 2020 and beyond outlook, so you can see, whoops, wrong, click, 2020, there's a lot of water work going on through, I believe this is a 15-year snapshot, so this takes us through 2030. So there's a lot of work that's going to be done to making sure that our, our water infrastructure is up to date and ready to serve. And then parking, we have actually worked with Oakland County. We are not intelligent enough to do this in-house, so we had to outsource that intelligence. But all of our pay station collects transactional data. So we just sent our transactions to Oakland County and said, could you heat map this for us and show us what parking looks like over all the city lots? And this kind of shows you parking activities and how it's distributed throughout the city. I won't go through the whole video because this goes from, this is a typical parking week. We sent them all the data for the surface slots, and we don't enforce on Sundays, so there's nothing to see there. But we'll go to the weekend, and you can see the darker, the square, the more dense parking is. So if you see a black section, that means there's no parking available at all. Friday night or Saturday night, we have a bit of a freakout because the whole thing goes black.
But pretty, pretty yellow during the day.
Yes, yes. But at night, night hits a challenge. So that's a really cool piece of work that you can do with data, that you can do if you leverage the right partnerships, like we have with Oakland County and brokered that relationship. But unfortunately, I don't have the savvy to be able to provide that in-house, so don't get used to that, being updated. And then if you click on the development here, 2018 to 2020, here we're just pointing out the, the blue parking, the blue square, which represents the proposed Lot 6 West Troy Parking Street Development. And this, if you click it, just provides you details behind the, the project at this early stage. Going down, here we just have a summary. All in all, over 140 projects were submitted by all city departments. So that's over a five-year period. We have over 140 capital improvement projects. If you look at the pride chart, you can see this big orange slice right here, that's pretty much all of the street bond infrastructure work. So the majority of our expenses, I believe about 60% of the capital improvement budget is associated with the, the bond work. All application information is available on our public portal. I encourage you to check it out. We will be updating the city's website soon, and I think it'll be a welcome-looking facelift that is very user-centric. We will be making sure to promote this on that website when we do that. But for the meantime, it's going to be residing on the Community Economic Development page and the city's website where all the other planning documents are. And over $66 million in capital expenditures are budgeted for the next five years. Again, much of that is associated with the street infrastructure, but there are other projects that we're trying to achieve as well. And next steps. So we always seek to improve. So I think we, we've talked over with the Planning Commission, we'll be reconvening the CIP Committee team, hopefully in May or June, to kind of review what we've done and whether we accomplished our, our goals for this year and what we'd like to change. And I know that two things have been brought up specifically. One, we do have a lot of capital improvement projects, right? We have a lot of plans, so we need a ranking system to make sure that we have a mechanism in place to help prioritize how we invest if we have a scarce amount of resources, right? So we're going to try to achieve that as an improvement going into next fall. And two, referencing what I mentioned before, opening up a public application process to the, to the public. So we'd like to give you access to the digital application, allow you to submit CIPs directly to the CIP Committee. They would receive them and score them, and your project would be scored just like a department project. And you would have to be able to prove out the alignment with the community goals. And then in September and October, the CIP Department Application Period would end, and the committee would convene and, and review, and then hopefully we adopt it in the Planning Commission November. And that's it. It's over. Isn't that amazing? Can I answer any questions? Let's just have that drone video going in the background.
I don't think this is interactive enough.
Who are you?
I'm making a joke. So thank you for this presentation and sort of the walkthrough of the new technology. I think it's pretty incredible how you have one source to access multiple plans, so you don't have to open up four different PDFs, dive through multiple pages to try to find what you're looking for. And this sort of brings it all in one home, and it relates to investments we've already made. And I think it's sort of brilliant where we've come from and what this is achieving in terms of transparency for our residents. I mean, this is truly knowing what is your government investing in. Well, it's right here. This is how we're using taxpayer dollars, and it's an open process. If you disagree, there's a clear way to submit your own ideas and get involved. And so thank you for a really great job in putting this together, making the new technology work. I'm pretty impressed. With that said, are there any questions from council about what's in the CIP?
No questions, because I've been through it back and forth. Again, just a lot of kudos and congratulations, and huge thanks to everybody involved putting this together, especially you, Joe. I know that you've, you've done the, the grunt work, the big grunt work on this. It's incredible. You, you said so much that I, you know, it's transparent. If anybody wants to know what's going on in the city, where we're spending money, it's here.
It's important to know too as well, that I know this is so government of us to do, but it's a plan and a plan. So the CIP is a plan that we use in our budget discussions that will be approved on March or April 24th. So while we have $66 million in capital needs over the next five years, not all of them will necessarily get funded because we may not have the money. But to have that roadmap, this was our first year, we'll be rolling that out in April, where we were able to do three-year budgeting with a two-year forecast. And we were able to do that because our team did take the time to take a look at what does the next five years look like. So the capital improvement plan is exactly that. It's, it's part of all of the other plans because it's a guideline for us in budget. Doesn't necessarily mean every single thing in that capital plan is approved on that particular year, but it's the, basically the, the roadmap that our, our team put together for council's discussion when we have our budget meetings. So, and yes, Joe did a great job.
It's great alignment of documents, and I think I go back to, we're moving towards three-year budgeting, and we're at two-year budgeting now, which is really about forecasting with more accuracy and predictability for the residents as well as for staff. And this helps us get to the third year part, right? Because we're not doing it this year, we're going to be doing it.
No, three years, this is coming next, the current, the next fiscal year, we'll be doing three year.
Yes, the next fiscal year. So I just think, I feel like the stars are aligning.
The city attorney did point out a fallacy with my, with my recommendation. If you look at the motion language in the first whereas's, I referenced the incorrect planning legislation. So I would ask council to correct that language to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Act 33 of 2008. I reached back all the way to 1931.
Okay, so it's just 2008 is, is the year.
And Dan, I think they changed the name of the act, correct?
Yeah. Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Public Act 33 of 2008.
And I do have to channel Dan Martin tonight. These will be available in hard copy and online in a non-technology form.
Absolutely, just less, less interesting.
Hope you're listening.
Good question. So. Yes, with all of our budgets, just so you know, anytime we present a budget over the next few weeks, it will all be available either at the front desk, at the front counter at City Hall, and the libraries where we keep our most current, up-to-date information that relates to budgets. So we'll ensure that that copy is both at the library and here at the front desk of City Hall.
If there are no other questions or comments, we need a motion on this resolution.
Well, I would like to make a motion to accept the 2000 fiscal year ending 2017, 2021 CIP Plan, Capital Improvement Plan, as presented with the correction of municipal, I'm sorry, Michigan Planning and Enabling Act of 2008.
Support.
Can I present it that way?
Yes.
That's fine, okay. Rather than read that whole page of whereas.
Yes. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Pollock.
Yes.
Weeks May.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Piana.
Yes. All right, that is approved. Now we are on to call to council. But first, we start with staff. Is there anything from the Police Department tonight?
Nothing this evening.
Fire Department?
Mayor Pro Tem and council. Chief Sullivan asked me to come up here tonight and congratulate firefighter Matt Nutt for completing his probationary program on March 23rd. The reason he asked me to come up here and congratulate him is we have recently upgraded our probationary program. Through surveys and studies, we determined that our program was not as robust as it should be. We added some steps and some processes. We followed the police model that they are utilizing right now. We surveyed 200 other subjects, including businesses and police, fire agencies and ambulance agencies. We reached outside of the fire department to determine the best model for what we needed to do for a probationary program. We've implemented that. Firefighter Nutt is our first graduate through, although it only was implemented halfway through his probation. Probationary firefighter Michelak and probationary firefighter Mark Abani got the original from the start, and they have already commented that other places that they have worked, this is far more organized than what they've ever been in before.
Well, congratulations, that's great to hear.
Why don't we go to DPW? Anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Excellent. Economic Development?
Nothing tonight, other than just put on your calendars for May 15 is our redevelopment ready community certification.
Ah, yes. Excellent. Parks and Rec, anything else tonight?
No.
Finance? Oh, come on, you guys. Communications?
I don't know.
What? All right, I think I got everybody?
Jenny.
Oh, I am so sorry. Human Resources, Jenny.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I just wanted to remind the public that we are still accepting applications for the Deputy Parks and Rec Director position. You can find the link to apply for that position on www.ferndalem.gov. Click on the About tab and Human Resources, and you can go ahead and apply right through there. We also, tomorrow, are meeting to receive our annual report on our Health and Wellness Center through CARE Here. I've gotten a little sneak peek, and it all looks really good, so I'm really excited to bring that report to council at our next meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Parking, anything for parking tonight?
Actually, no major updates tonight, but I did want to bring back a clarification. There was a question at the end of City Council that we were asked to look into concerning the bonding language. And I did want to confirm that the bonding issuance language that was submitted was correct. The intent of the repayment for the bonds was to be repaid through the auto parking fund, which is through parking revenues, permit revenues, meter revenues. But the bonding language does, because of the Michigan legislation, require us to also note that the general fund is a security, or collateral, if you will, against that. So it would have to be listed.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for the update. Dan, Krist?
Nothing this evening, Mayor Pro Tem.
City Manager's Office?
Yes, I'd like to offer our early congratulations to Joe. The next time he is in front of us, he will be father, so life as he knows it, he will be forever changed. We want to wish you the best and very much good luck this next week. We want to wish you the best and very much good luck this next week, as we anticipate baby Gao Cho and the new addition to our Ferndale family. So, we wish you the best, and we look forward to pictures and you back in the office. Congrats.
Get that sleep now.
Yep.
All right, on council, Councilman Polica?
I have nothing. Marty?
Oh, sorry, Marty?
Sorry, I have nothing either.
Councilwoman Leaks May?
Trying to find something, but anyway. Let's see. The Ferndale Education Foundation is having their annual silent auction dinner on March 31st. It will be held at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center from, I believe, 6 till 10. And always a fun event and benefits our schools, so if you can make it out, please do attend. Tickets are $60 apiece and still on sale.
Excellent. I do have something tonight, and I sort of wanted to expand on our learning experience up at the Michigan Municipal League. I already touched upon earlier in relation to the municipal finance reform with the DDA, so I won't go on that, even though that's a pressing, ongoing, ever-prevalent topic at MML. But city council, three of us went up to Lansing last week, as well as a couple staff. Our planner, Justin Lyons, presented on the City of Ferndale's Complete Streets and the progress of our investment in safety improvements for walkable streets since 2010. And so, I congratulate him on giving that presentation. But really, I just wanted to talk about the other topics that were of note. And I have to say that my opinion, the overall tone of the conference was somewhat a Debbie When they asked, it is, because cities are still facing fiscal constraints as the economy comes back. Cities aren't able to capitalize on the same type of prosperity that perhaps you're seeing with your own home values, or your own, your own job, or increase in salary. And it's making decisions difficult across cities. At the same time, there's lots of confusion going on at the federal level that is impacting the state level and cities. And so, the words chaotic, unpredictable were used, and that a lot of the positions at the federal level that support community investment go, are unfulfilled and probably won't happen or won't be filled. And so, really what we're seeing is a disinvestment in Michigan with revenue sharing, we're about to see a disinvestment in communities from the federal government, down to the states through to communities. And so, we're going to see more cuts, I think, coming through some of our programming. We're already taking some conservative approaches with that, with Community Development Block Grant, and being conservative and removing that out of the budget entirely. And so, really concerned about the state of cities going forward. But also, to that, you know, balancing sort of the chaotic, predictable, and Debbie Downer, where are the great things that are happening across our state and in our cities and the changes that are coming? The impact of autonomous vehicles and Metro Detroit and the state of Michigan as the central hub of sort of the investment area of autonomous vehicle technology and testing and implementation in our cities. And what is happening is that change is coming. Change is coming of how we get around, how we connect, and the choices we make of getting from point A to B. And that single-car use is no longer the prevalent and primary choice. So, the message away from MML is, is that if your community is still planning for people driving all the time in singly, single-owned vehicles, then you are missing the changes and the opportunities that are coming down communities. Between car sharing and Zipcar, more transit options, and bikeable, walkable communities that we need as a community to balance investments that address those opportunities and challenges. And I think that's what we've been trying to do in Ferndale, as this autonomous vehicle technology gets implemented, hopefully in Michigan as a jobs creator, that we stay on top of that, and that we always have that in mind, that how people get around is changing. And if we ignore that, we're ignoring opportunities, we're ignoring investments in our community, and we're ignoring how other people want to live. And so, just wanted to remind people to be mindful that, that driving is not the only choice going forward for communities across the United States and in Michigan. And so, with that, I'm calling this meeting done.